That was coming there, Kerrigan. Oh, I mean... It's called the Order of the Spark City Council Meeting with a... Roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
We have a quorum, thank you. Okay, opening ceremonies. We have invocation speaker Pastor Carlos A. Camacho. Is Carlos here? Okay, I don't see Pastor Carlos Camacho, so Ira, would you mind leading a prayer for us?
Sure.
So, this is our Assemblyman Ira Hansen who will lead us in prayer. Thanks, Ira.
Our Father in Heaven, we at this time bow our heads and ask thee to bless us that with thy spirits we'll be able to accomplish the needs of the city of Sparks. Help us to do thy will and to obey thy commandments and to be better servants for thee. Help us as public servants that we will be able to do the will of the people that we represent and always keep their needs in our minds, and this is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Ira. Appreciate that. Should all remain standing for the... What are we doing now? Pledge allegiance. Okay. Craig, would you lead us?
Are you kidding me?
Do you remember how to say it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
You came right through. Wasn't a problem. Okay. Public comment. If you'd like to speak under public comment, if you fill out one of these cards, please. This is under number four. We will have public comment later on under other issues if you want, so... Are you going to do it under this, Ira, or another one?
Well, I don't know how you do it.
You can do it under both.
Actually, I think it's almost the end of your agenda.
Yeah.
You know what I'm doing.
So, you want to do it now?
You want me to fill out or want you to do it now?
Fill one out, and then we'll get you right up here.
All right.
Randy Canal?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here as a citizen of Sparks area and 54-year resident of the Reno-Sparks area, last 30 years residing in Sparks. Training coordinator for the plumbers and pipe fitters, joined apprenticeship committee that represents all the members of Local 350 and the Contractors of Nevada Association of Mechanical Contractors. I'm here in regard to the licensing issue that's going to be discussed later and have a first reading today. I just wanted to say that licensing and certification are the council's way of watching out for the public's interest in offering the first line of defense against unscrupulous and even predatory business practices. Minimum requirements to better ensure the public health and safety are required for many business activities. Certifications and licenses help ensure individual accountability of anyone performing work in specialty trades or craft. City can't afford to hire enough inspectors, especially specialty inspectors, to guarantee that all work installed in construction projects is installed per locally accepted codes and ordinances. This is one of the code books. People need to be caught up and kept up to date with current codes. To walk away from a job site and say that if it's wrong, you'll just have to come back and fix it, is not the proper way to protect the public's best interest. The mass numbers of construction defects, lawsuits, and legislation prove, we need to improve efforts to protect the public, not strip existing methods that we have now. This doesn't even begin to cover the expenses and frustration of home business owner issues that don't even make it to a court system. Codes change on regular cycles because technologies and best practices change continually. Certifications and licensing are a proven method of maintaining a higher level of product, and through continuing education and recertification, public interests are best served. We're not here talking about the safety of job sites as far as OSHA regulations are talking about. We're talking about safety as far as proper installations, present for spread of disease and dangerous installations could result in extensive property damage, potential health risks, fires, electrocution, and explosions. Certifications are a tool an inspector has in his toolbox that he can use if an occasion of need does occur. Don't throw the baby out with the water on this issue. Rework it if you have to, but don't just outright eliminate it, please. Negotiations are going on with other entities, mainly being the city of Reno. Right now, where members from all aspects of industry are negotiating a compromise, it's palatable to all of them. And I hope that the city will give the opportunity to see what comes of that and possibly discuss that here, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Craig Rowe?
Craig Rowe with Tanama Construction.
You know, Craig, you can sit down if you want.
Can I sit down?
Yeah, pull the microphone down so you're at least more comfortable.
I'm here to discuss the whole issue about Title 15. And just to kind of give you a history, you know, I've been here for 20 years in Reno and Sparks. We've done a lot in the city of Sparks. We've built over a billion dollars' worth of construction. And a number of months ago, it came to our attention that organized labor had brought up some issues with the city of Reno, having to do with the electricians and the plumbers. And the story that we were told was it had to do with faulty installations and the risk of safety, fire hazards and the such. So, I talked to my people in my organization, and we've never had a problem with installation or quality of our plumbing or installation or any safety issues like those that were being purported to be an issue. And so, we talked to a number of non-union companies in the community and came to the conclusion that we felt that this was something that was being brought up as an issue that we didn't consider an issue. And it is true that we've been working with Reno and trying to compromise with organized labor to come up with some sort of a program that's palatable. But the concerns that we have is that we're entering a period of time when, you know, we've had an economic study done that we're going to be sharing with everybody in the city of Reno and in Sparks, you know, showing the need for plumbers and electricians over the next five to six years. We're going to need twice as many as we have currently. And it's our opinion that the requirements that are being asked of us, while some of them are not totally unreasonable, it's a hindrance to our business and to our ability to be able to produce the housing that's going to be needed. Most of the issues, I must say, in fairness, on our side, has to do with the residential side of the business. The commercial side of the business is another issue that we're not totally concerned about with respect to some of the requirements that the city of Sparks is being asked to institute. But with respect to residential construction, those are the areas that we're having issues from the standpoint that we don't see that there is a problem. We haven't experienced a problem in 20 years, but suddenly there seems to be a concern about it, and so I just would ask that we, you know, we look at it carefully because I feel pretty confident the city of Reno is going to institute some sort of a program that will restrict our ability to be able to hire more plumbers and electricians.
Thanks, Craig. Ira Hansen?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First of all, congratulations to Ray Hager, too. I'm a longtime fan of Ray's. We've duked it out on occasion, but overall, he's been super fair to me, so thank you, Ray, and happy Ray Hager Day. First of all, I'm a non-union contractor, and in fact, in February, I've been a contractor in this area for 30 years. So, they're trying to paint this as a union, non-union issue, and that's not. It's not an issue. That is not the issue. The issue, in fact, if you look, the Associated Builders and Contractors, who I think are almost 100% non-union, are 100% supportive of this. AGC, which is about half and half, 100% supportive of keeping the regulation that you have now. You guys already received my letter. You know where I'm coming from on this. What I would strongly urge the city council to do is simply delay this. Don't put it on as an action item until after the city of Reno is done. As the gentleman just spoke before me pointed out correctly, the city of Reno and all of us are in negotiations right now. We've had three different meetings so far with Dan Hawley. I'm not sure what his position, not quite the city manager, I don't think, but he's the one handling it for the city. I would strongly urge that you leave it alone until after the city gets through with it. And if, in fact, they throw it out like you guys want to do, fine, then you can, too. But here's the problem if you don't. If you guys go ahead and delete this ahead of city of Reno, then in effect, what Sparks will do is open themselves up to the substandard people that can't make the grade for Reno and Washoe County, if these cards are, in fact, again, required. And at the last meeting, we came down to some very reasonable compromises. As I recall, the city's going to come up with 16 hours' worth of credits you have to take on the code, and that will be once a year for everybody. Basically, I have to get into an apprenticeship thing, but all you require 16 hours is completely reasonable. And it also is going to require that, and they're working on this, what the ratio should be. How many apprentices should serve under a journeyman? Currently, under the union rules, it's typically two journeymen to every one. One of the non-union contractors who are actually working on the other side, he said his current ratio is six journeymen to four, so it's three to two, basically. So, they're going to try to come up with some kind of a reasonable compromise. Might end up being one journeyman to every two apprentices, something like that. But I would strongly urge you to just step back a little bit and allow the city of Reno to do what, you know, in effect, you guys should be doing before you make this decision as an action item in the next month or whenever you're going to put it on that. You ought to delay it. That's all I'm asking. And if, in fact, you determine that it should go forward, fine and dandy, but you ought to let those things work themselves out. It's being very fairly handled by the city. And again, non-union and union guys are on both sides of the aisle on this thing. The biggest concern I have is that the development community, and I've watched this now for years, have refused to even do e-verify or anything else. And as I said in my letter, I'm a licensed contractor, and the reason I'm able to still make a decent living in this community is because the State Contractors Board has a very aggressive program of going after illegal, non-licensed contractors. If that goes away, I'm done. And what's basically happened is all the guys that are the rank-and-file, blue-collar workers in this town have been forced to compete with people that frankly aren't even legally in many cases supposed to be in the country and on these job sites, and it's dropped the wage scale to nothing. I urge you to just delay that until after the city's done. Thank you very much.
Hey, sorry. Alan Darney? Is that right, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Alan Darney. I'm the, as well, a longtime city Sparks resident. I've lived here for 52 years. I'm also the training director for the Northern Nevada Electrical Training Center. We train electricians. And I'm here to speak on the licensing issue as well. Excuse me. The licensing brings some level of assurance for Sparks residents and business owners that the people that are entering their homes and businesses to do work on electrical and plumbing systems have some level of competence that exists there for those workers in the city. Like Ira said, the city of Reno ordinance is under review right now, and we have good confidence that that's going to go through. And it does have a bearing on the city, just as Ira said, on who's going to end up coming here to work when they can't work elsewhere, not only in the city of Reno and the counties and in Washoe County, but also in all the states surrounding Nevada. They all have some form of state licensing and so forth. So, those that are unqualified to meet those criteria in those states and other municipalities will end up here to go to work. In terms of impacting business in the city, we hear over and over from our economic development people that the complaint from companies that are trying to come into this area and establish themselves as the workforce and a trained workforce. And so, this just depletes that even further. And also, the inspectors use this as a tool. When they see a pattern of poor workmanship on a job, then they can use this as a tool to require that they're going to see better qualified workers when they reach those job sites. Again, this is not a union or non-union issue. We have many non-union companies and union companies on the side of the issue that says we need to keep this licensing in place. In fact, we have contractors that are saying they wouldn't dream of sending a non-licensed person to somebody's home to do work. If we needed more truck drivers on the road, we don't do away with licensing to increase the number of truck drivers that are driving out on our streets, and so it doesn't make any more sense to do away with this licensing in order to try to get more people into our industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Betty Bishop? Welcome, Betty. Long time no see.
Mayor Martini and council members. I am Betty Bishop. I'm an Action member from Little Flower Catholic Church, and I'm a Sparks resident and a retired schoolteacher. And I am here to request that you keep the requirements for plumbers and electricians for the apprenticeship and journeyman programs. These requirements should be enforced to make sure that the quality of homes built in our community are built to last. We know that families buying homes often have invested their entire life savings, and they need to be able to raise their children in safety, know that their homes are safe, and these requirements that we're talking about for the journeyman and apprenticeship program should help to ensure that. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Leonard?
Mayor and council members, my name is Paul Leonard. I live in your neighboring community of Reno. I was a respiratory therapist for 30 years. It was a field in which there are technical changes from time to time, and you have to upgrade your skills as you go along, which is one reason why the state of Nevada saw fit to license us as professionals and to require continuing education units. You would not want any of your relatives, if God forbid, they wound up on a ventilator, to be cared for by somebody with the equivalent of a nurse's aides training. Nurse's aides do wonderful work within their field. I would not want to live in a house in which the plumbing and electricity had been done by someone who had not gone through the apprenticeship program and through the licensing requirements. We're facing the same issue in Reno. We hope you don't lead us into a downward spiral. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Tetro?
Thank you. Don Tetro with the Builders Association of Northern Nevada. First, I want to just thank you for looking at this and taking the good steps of looking at not only into the future and how you can improve the city of Sparks for the development that's coming, but also to the past and looking at regulations that simply are unnecessary and outside the role of the city. And I believe that this... We've heard a lot of blustery opinions substituted as facts, but the fact remains, nobody's come up here with a single piece of evidence saying that work done by somebody with a card, with a union title, with whatever it is, is going to do better work. There are a lot of great plumbers, and I quite honestly think many of them should take offense to the references of substandard work that's been given to them. There hasn't been a single issue, as stated in the staff report, in 23 years, nobody's ever had a violation towards this. So, I want to thank you for moving forward at removing it. As far as illegals go, that's a federal offense, and so if people have illegals on their job, they're violating federal law. The last thing I'll mention is the barriers to entry by requiring an apprentice card. It is state mandated that they have a high school diploma or GED equivalent. 28% of the construction workforce doesn't have a high school diploma and thus wouldn't qualify to be plumbers or electricians. Many of them have found a way to provide for their families, and by putting this in force, you're simply taking away their ability to provide for their family and for nothing else than a consideration of a card or whatever union title they're going to be given, forcing them maybe into the justice system or onto government assistance. So, I think that's a big step backwards. Also, the bar would be set higher to be an apprentice than to get your Nevada State Contractors license. You don't have to have a high school diploma or GED to have your contractors license, and there's plenty of good contractors out there. At the end of the day, the liability falls with the business owner. When somebody does have an issue or they do have a problem, that's where they're going to look to resolve the issue. They're not going to go and check the employee's card who worked on it. So, all that being said, I just want to thank you for taking this up, looking at things that work and don't work, and I hope you remove this from your books. Thank you.
Okay, wait, let me get this straight down. Blustery opinion, was that it?
Yeah.
I like it. I wrote it down because I'm going to use that again, okay? Is that all right?
You're more than welcome. I think I spoke for myself.
You know what? Perfect, really. It fits a lot of deals, let me tell you. Brian Reader?
Mayor Martini and city council members, city manager Driscoll. For the record, my name's Brian Reader, representing the Nevada Associated Mechanical Contractors and the Nevada Associated General Contractors. Our comments are in regards to item 9.3. We just want to be in record saying that we are opposed to removing this portion of code in its entirety. Can it be ingested? Probably. And we intend, in the next several days, to provide an alternative proposal that we hope that the city council, the city staff, and the construction community can, that it's something that will work for all parties involved. We want to be clear and on record saying that we really don't believe this is an issue of non-union contractors versus signatory contractors. We think that there are contractors on both sides that feel that this portion of code is necessary and that certifying a plumber and electrician is necessary for quality of work, health, safety, and issues like that. Really, what it is, too, when someone is certified, it proves that they have knowledge of the code, and the city does have vested interest in making sure that work is up to code, so I would think that it would make their job easier. Anyway, we're happy to work with staff and the city council, and everybody, we appreciate you looking at this, and I will reach out to each one of you individually with our proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. George Hardaway? Welcome, George.
Thank you, Mayor. How are you doing?
Good. How are you, sir?
Good. Good afternoon. Mayor Martini and council members. I am George Hardaway, action leader, member of Second Baptist Church, and a longtime resident of Sparks, 47 years. I came here as a student athlete 47 years ago. When I completed my training as an educator, this prepared me for teaching our young people. It gave me knowledge of how children learn effective teaching methods and more, and much more. I can't imagine becoming an effective teacher without the professional training that I receive. This is the same as plumbers and electricians. They need requirements for training through apprenticeship and journeyman that prepares them to provide high-quality workmanship in our homes. This is essential to keep our homes safe and keep the quality high. Please keep this requirement in place. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, George. Anyone else have a public comment? Okay, one... Yes, sir. Come on up and give your comment, and if you'd fill out one of the cards. Say again? You're right. I thought it hurt, Don. I'm sorry. See, I knew you were against me, so I pushed it away, so I'm sorry. Just kidding, Don. It wasn't here.
This is the first time I've ever done this, so if I stumble a little bit, you understand. Thank you so much for having this hearing. My name is Don Pascal. I own Zephyr Plumbing here in Reno. Formerly, it was a company called Express Plumbing, Chapter 40, did some interesting things for us. Now the legislature's changed, that's good. I am a card-carrying journeyman. I spent four years in apprenticeship in Oregon. It has the most stringent requirements you can even possibly conceive of in order to gain a journeyman card. 92% of the men that spend four years in apprenticeship fail. I passed by one point. I memorized literally the code from one end to the other. I worked with men that did the same. I moved down here because the requirements are so strict in Oregon, this is where this can go, that it literally shut down construction in central Oregon, where I'm from, Bend, Oregon. The challenge that I have with this, I have worked with union, union journeyman, union apprentices, non-union journeyman, non-union apprentices, men from Mexico, whether they speak English or not, and what I learned was this, is desire is everything. If they want to learn the code, they will learn the code. In my company, we have training every two weeks. We sit down, we go through code. I take a personal responsibility because I believe in training. because I believe in training. I believe that you should have qualified people that come to your homes. Currently, we are doing all of the service work for some of the largest builders in town because we do have qualified people. However, these people, most of them, white or Hispanic, do not read. My wife's sisters never graduated from high school. My wife's brothers never graduate, her father never graduated from high school. He can be, he could barely leave. He's passed now. But my point is, is, is that you will throw a, if, if you decide to make this tough, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make this tough. These men from all over the United States don't read. They, they do math fantastic. They can read plans fine. We do a new construction residential. They're fantastic plumbers, some of the best I've ever known. However, if you make these requirements too tough, you gotta have a GED, you gotta have a high school diploma, I'm just afraid for them and their families. They have succeeded. I pay my men very, very well. I don't try to, you know, make them bottom of the barrel. But I'm concerned for them. These are good people. These are hard-working men. They're working in the snow. They're working in the rain. We work outside. And I just hope that you keep that into your consideration, that it's, it's desire, just like a, a, any trade. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. And then realize that we will have a full-blown public hearing in two weeks, I believe. Yeah. Our, at, at our next council meeting, so sharpen up your pencils and your claws and whatever, and we'll go at it. It's good. Good conversation. Thanks. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Looking for motion? Ron Schmidt. Approve agenda is outlined. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the agenda. As I allow my staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next is consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Spark City Council meeting of November ninth, two thousand fifteen. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Ms. Ratty? Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the council meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand fifteen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next is announcements, presentations. American Public Works Association, APWA, presentation of a project of the year award, a POTY. I'm just reading what it says here, folks. P-O-T-Y for the North Truckee Drain Phase One Project. Welcome.
Thanks. Good afternoon. And I appreciate this opportunity to come and present to Mayor Martini and members of Spark City Council. For the record, my name is Garth Oxl. I'm the president for the Nevada chapter of the American Public Works Association. And twice a year, we have conferences where we select projects of the year. We have a conference in the spring in southern Nevada where we select projects of lower dollar value. And then in the fall, we have another conference in the north here where we select projects of higher dollar value. With me today is Lori Bigum, right back here. She was our fall conference chair. Did a tremendous job on that, and I just, again, wanted to have an opportunity to publicly thank her. I've done that in the past, but I'd like to do that again to acknowledge the, the service that all of our volunteers that serve on the board and committees do, of which Sparks is also a member of APWA, and we do appreciate that. The project that was nominated and subsequently was awarded was the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project. And what makes this particular award, I think, so valuable, if you will, is it's voted on by the peers. It's actually members of the APWA who are attending the conference, sit in the afternoon presentations of the projects, hear them out and evaluate them on different criteria. And those criteria are, because I think it's important to realize how this project rose above the rest, is service to the public, community need, intricacy of design, aesthetic value, difficulty of construction, cost growth and time growth, complexity of financial background and sustainability. And a couple of things to note that the selection committee really liked about this project was not only that it came in very much under budget, very much ahead of time, but was how that occurred, and that was Q and D's use of a traveling form system. The committee was very impressed with that and the city of Sparks willing to, you live in a gambling state, roll the dice and let a contractor be innovative and come up with something that ended up saving the taxpayers of the city of Sparks a tremendous amount of money and, and time growth on that one. So with that, uh, did anyone else come from HDR or sneak in? Okay. So with that, we have an award here, and if we'd like, we'd just like to take a picture for our own records of, I'm not sure if the whole city council wants to, or if it's just presenting to Andy, whatever is the pleasure of the council.
Send to Andy. Are we good?
Congratulations, Andy.
Thank you.
You know, just, just think that's only half of it. Wait till we get the whole thing done, right, Andy?
We're running.
Thanks. Thanks, Garth. Appreciate it. Okay, proclamation, Ray Hager Day. Step on up, Ray.
It's our turn.
All right, I'm gonna read the proclamation first and then we'll let you talk and then we'll, I'll talk and.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Proclamation. Whereas fifth-generation Nevadan and Sparks resident Raymond Hager graduated from the University of Nevada Reno in nineteen seventy-five with a degree in journalism, and whereas Mr. Hager began his career as a sports reporter and education reporter with the Ri, record career in Gardinerville and the Sparks Tribune, and whereas Mr. Hager joined the Reno Gazette Journal as a full-time sports writer in nineteen seventy-seven, and whereas Mr. Hager served as a reporter and columnist for the El Paso Times from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-three before returning to the RGJ as a sports editor, and, where did I go? Whereas Mr. Hager was named Carson Douglas Bureau Chief at the RGJ in two thousand and covered the Nevada Legislature in two thousand and two. He also covered the Washoe County School District and the gaming industry during his tenure at the RGJ. And whereas, in addition to the traditional news beats that Mr. Hager reported on, he also wrote and reported on a variety of other news and critical items which served to keep residents of Sparks and throughout the state of Nevada informed. And whereas Mr. Hager hails from a distinguished family who settled and helped to shape the Carson Valley, Mr. Hager's dad, Raymond Senior, was a decorated war hero, earning the Distinguished Flying Cross and two Purple Hearts in World War Two and the Korean Conflict. And whereas Ray Hager has been an outstanding journalist who has served our city and state in a professional and dedicated manner while upholding the highest journalistic standards and integrity. We appreciate his service and commitment to Sparks. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen as Ray Hager Day. Got a picture behind you there. Right of your.
Well, I, I just want to say, I, I'll be quick because I know you got a lot to do because I've covered these meetings myself.
Yeah, but I won't, I won't be quick, so.
You know, I, first I want to introduce my brother and his wife, my brother Martin Hager and his wife, Mai Hager Bigum. And also the, the executive editor at the Reno Gazette Journal, Kelly Scott, is here too. And of course, everybody knows Andy. He's, he's here too. But, you know. I, I, you mentioned that I was a fifth-generation Nevadan, but I wanted to say I was a third-generation Sparks resident and my grandfather was a conductor on the railroad. And of course, my father, as you noted, was a, a war hero. I wanted to mention that my uncle Tip was the football coach at Sparks High School through the forties and won about four or five state titles, although the records have actually been lost through that time by the NIAA and I can't, I, I, I just confirm that, you know, through family lore, but.
I think it was somebody from Reno, Ohio got.
Yeah, yeah. But the one.
Yeah, exactly.
But back then, when, when Tip's players graduated, they didn't go to college. They went off to fight the war, so things have changed. And, you know, I've lived in Sparks all my life, except for a few years when I lived in El Paso, and then when I went was a student at the university. I've, I've always enjoyed Sparks because overall, I think the city has very good governance. And the city has also had a very, a string of strong and very good mayors. And Gino, you, you follow that, and I've known you since I was a kid. You worked with my mom at First National Bank. Sparks has kind of changed. I remember when I was a little kid, my mom had a party with bankers and they were very loud and the neighbors called the cops. And the cops that came was, was a guy named Tommy Hill who became the police chief. But Tommy Hill, as soon as he came in, he took off his gun and joined the party.
Exactly.
And that was the way Sparks was back then. Gino, I wanted to say it was, I was, was sad to hear your recent diagnosis.
Thank you.
And my prayers go out to you. And one last thing I wanted to say is, mention is, is Adam Mayberry is, I think you guys are blessed as far as having a public information officer. I think he's the best in the business. He survived the cauldron of being the PIO at the, at the airport, which people in the business know that was, that was a tough, tough thing.
The cauldron, yeah.
And he's overcome a lot of things to get where he is today, and I just admire him. And I just wanted to say, I've enjoyed working with you all these years, Adam. You do very well. But anyway, this is, this has been great, and I know you got a lot to do. And thank you again. This is quite an honor. Not one thing is.
Yeah, just relax. Don't leave yet, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
One question. Is Ray Hager Day today or tomorrow?
All the, all the above.
Does that, what, does it mean, what does it, does it mean I can get away with just about anything, or?
Yeah, ask.
No, no. Not just about anything. Anything. Not just about anything. Anything.
Anything, okay, well.
I'm sure the city has changed.
Yes, woo-hoo. Well, well, anyway, I won't cause you any trouble.
Comments? Anybody have comments? Please go ahead. Ron Smith?
You know, Ray, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Ray, I've known you for a long time, and I've already, always appreciated your honesty and your integrity when you're reporting. Known your brother, worked with your brother for many years, and, and that family bond has always been there, which you don't see a lot these days. So I'm very proud of both of you guys and, 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 you know, we're gonna miss you at the paper, that's for sure.
Well, thank you, Ron, very much. I re, I remember interviewing you at the, at the first press conference when they were dig, taking the first spades of earth out over at the Legends. And although some of the things did not get built, that is growing, you know, very well, and it's, I hope it's given you a lot of tax money. Charlene, I wanted to note that your husband almost knocked me out twice in one game in playing football in high school, too.
Charlene, go ahead.
I, I wasn't sure if I should. Mention that or, or not. Sparks is such a small community, northern Nevada is, but I found this last year campaigning and living here fifty-one years, that really it's about two degrees of separation. And so I go back with Ray to Holy, actually Immaculate Conception Elementary School on Richards Way, which then became Holy Cross Elementary School. And we were, he was a, he's a year older than I am. And so we were in school together. We were Holy Cross Crusaders. And that whole group of kids that you went on to Minogue and, and my dad got transferred to California, but, so I lost track of you till we, you know, I came back here to college. But in the meantime, my husband went to White Pine High School and he did, White Pine did kick your rear ends when they played.
No, we won the game. It was just me that got.
It was just you. It was just you. But I, but I want to, we reconnected again, saw each other in college some, and then through the years of variety of community things that I've done. And I've always appreciated and given you a hard time because of our political persuasions being opposite. I always told you to be nice, and you always were. You were always fair and always reported, especially when you started covering politics, in a very fair and ethical manner. And I appreciate that, and I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Well, thank you. You know, you mentioned Holy Cross. I, I, I got kicked out of that school, by the way, and then had to go to.
It's not the only one, though, right?
A place called Glendale Academy. It was a Catholic performance school, which they shut down after a few years. It was kind of tough, but it was good for me.
That's great. Ms. Ratty?
I just wanted to say a quick congratulations, Ray. It's been truly been a present, pleasure to work with. And there was a time in my life when I wanted, thought I wanted to be a sports writer. I was the sports editor of the Sagebrush while you were out of town and realized that it was too hard and that I had to get out of it. And so I, I know the, the hard work that you put in over your career and the hours and the, some of the crazy, craziness that has gone on in that business. And you've stuck it out and you've done an amazing job while you've done it, and the integrity is really impressive. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I, I, Julie, I think you've done an excellent job as a, as, as a council member, too.
Thank you.
And I've always, you know, I've spoken to you in the past. I was always questioning you whether you wanted to run for the Assembly, and you, you remember those, those days. But I, whatever you do, I think you're gonna do well at it.
Thank you.
And then for me, Ray, I want, I want to mention a few things. First of all, you mentioned your mom. I can't tell you how many fun times I had with your mother. She was the best. I mean, she was a banker. Everybody in business people loved her. The people in town loved her. I loved her. She taught me a lot of stuff, so I enjoyed, really enjoyed working with her. And then one thing I remember about you, like I didn't need a headache anyway, right? So here's the Republican, now called the Rhino, right, because I've supported Harry Reid. Well, you know what? Everybody makes a mistake once in a while. No, that's, that's.
Still in office.
Exactly. That's not true. That's not true. But I come down to Nevada newsmakers for Mr. Hager's there, and Sam Shad's gone. And what's the first question he asked me is, so why the hell is more Harry Reid? On TV, no less. So, thank you for that. I, I appreciate it. And then I don't think there's many people in here that remember the sports guy that you were so fond of and a good friend of. He was a manager for the New York Yankees, I think, if I remember correctly. But what was his name?
Well, you're referring to the time in nineteen seventy-eight when I was punched out pretty, pretty violently by Billy Martin, the manager of the New York Yankees. He was in town.
Yeah.
Before I was, well, if I could, if you'd like me to, I'll, I'll tell abbreviated story.
Please.
Billy Martin was the.
Please tell.
Manager of the New York Yankees in nineteen seventy-eight. They were the world champions. And back then, this is bef, this was when baseball was huge and the Yankees were America's team. Well, anyway, the, it was, Reno did, just got in a pro basketball team, the original Reno Big Horns. And the coach, Bill, Bill Musselman is the dad of current coach Eric Musselman. And he and Billy Martin were friends because Billy used to coach the Minnesota Twins and Musselman was the coach at University of Minnesota. Well, so we got Billy Martin to come out here, like the grand opening of the team. And I was doing a good job covering high school sports. And they said, well, Ray, we'll let you go out and cover Billy Martin. And it was, you know, my big break. And I went out there and I found him and he had, was so drunk. He, he drank all, he was notorious drunk and he drank all the way out here on the plane. And I went up and said, Billy, Mr. Martin, my name's Ray Hager, but could I interview you? And he, I don't want to repeat what he told me here, but he, you know, some cuss words and basically said no. And back then, you didn't have cell phones, so I went to the bank of payphones and called the office and I said. And I said, this guy's drunker and a skunk. Do you still want me to interview him? And they said, well, heck, yes. He's, how many times is the manager of the New York Yankees come to, come to Reno? And I said, okay. So there, back then, the old Centennial Coliseum had a, a bar next to it, next to the foyer. And so I went in there and saw Billy Martin. And he said, he was kind of cordial to me and, but things changed when he didn't realize that George Steinbrenner traded a guy named Sparky Lyle. He was the best pitcher on the Yankees, a Cy Young Award winner. He traded him to Texas when Billy was flying out here. So I was the bearer of bad news. And it really kind of worked his head. And I, I remember asking him if he could get along with Reggie Jackson, who was a big star of the Yankees at the time. And he said he could get along with Hitler Hirohito and Mussolini as long as they played Yankee baseball. And I was, I wanted to ask him how to spell Hirohito. I was writing this stuff down. And then he turned and started on a tirade about New York sports writers, Phil Pep and Dick Young and all these people that were very famous at the time.
Big time, yeah.
And he thought I was writing all that down. I was still on Hirohito. And he said, I've given you a good interview, and now I want to, I'm going to take it away. He didn't want those comments about the sports writers to reach them back there, causing trouble. So he kind of grabbed at my notes, and I put them behind my back. And the next thing I know, he hauled off and hit me. And my glasses came flying off. He chipped my teeth. It was, and they, I fell down, and they picked me up. And he told me fighting's no way to solve anything. And I said, I can't agree more. What are you doing? And he hit me again. And this time, I went over a table like in a West, Wild West movie. And someone handed, I got up, I was dizzy. Someone handed me my notes, what was left of them. And some, somebody handed me my glasses. And I went out. By the time I got back to the paper, I was all swelled up like a, like a sausage or something. And the pictures of me went out all over the, all over the, the wire, we called it back then. And they were published in just about every newspaper in America and some, you know, Samoa and things like that because Billy Martin was such a, was such a famous person. And you know what? And the next year, it was, it was a terror because I was getting all these calls and people were accusing me of picking the fight to further my career. You know, things like that. But one thing that I learned from that experience is, that helped me as a journalist, is that, you know, sometimes mostly, okay, you interview politicians and things like that. And you know, you, you don't really cut them much slack. But when you're interviewing just someone from the general public who's not used to dealing with the media, just like I wasn't, I wasn't used to dealing with it at that time, you got to be a little bit more gentle with them, you know? Gino, you don't qualify, you know, because you're the mayor.
You got to be gentle and stand farther back.
Well, yeah. But that's the one lesson that I got from it. And it's, it's given me a good story to tell.
You know, and I'm glad you told. That's a great story. You know, Billy Martin was very famous at the time, and he was a famous drunk at the time. And he was an angry, angry man at the time.
And I took a lot of, lot of, you know, business noise, whatever you want to take about. Talk, you know, I would say something else, but I'm not going to. It all ended when he was, he was a notorious drunken fighter. And the next fight he got into was with a marshmallow salesman. And just the fact that he was a marshmallow salesman, he's so funny, is that everybody forgot about the sports writer from, from Reno. So I was off the hook. And that's how, that's how that ended.
Oh, great. Thanks, Ray.
Well, God bless you all.
Appreciate you telling the story.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, it's in the internet somewhere you can find it. Go back and look. And I mean, the black eye is...
Ray Hager and Billy Martin, that photo will pop up.
That is, that is the biggest black eye you will ever see in your life, trust me. So, thanks, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work, too. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to report of claims and bills. Anybody want to, I mean, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 8.1 through 8.4. It's outlined by staff.
Do we have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, let's move on to 9.1, consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of the appointment to Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee EFAC from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Jeff Bowling, Alexis Candy, Sean Carey, Ted Erkan, Craig Knutson, Frank Leprid, Jennifer Martinez, and Brian Reader. And I think it's, we want to appoint Mr. Reader, is that correct, Mr. Briskell?
That is your recommendations.
Okay. Questions about Mr. Reader? And I believe he's with the AGC, correct, Brian? And volunteered to do this? I think he's got good, good teeth to do this. So we, we'd appreciate him doing that. Go ahead, Ron.
Also, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Reader was representing the construction industry. And you were also suggesting Craig Knutson as a candidate from the commercial development industry.
Okay. That's what I forgot, more than one, okay. Another, good guy.
Oh, and also, sir, Ted Erkan as a candidate for residential construction. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Guess if I read the agenda item, maybe I'd know what was going on. It's mine, of course. But, okay. So those are the ones, all people that I think the council knows and has worked with in the past. All good people. And believe me, I appreciate you guys stepping up to do this. It's not, it's not a big, huge commitment, but it's, it's some work. It takes some time. And it takes looking over our shoulder and making sure we're, we're doing things right and stuff. So appreciate the people that, that are stepping up to do this. Any other questions about these folks? Looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
I move to, who's it, me?
Yeah.
I moved to confirm the appointments of Ted Erkan, Greg Knutson, Brian Reader to the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee as recommended by Mayor Martini.
Have a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
It's moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve agenda item 9.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks. Thanks again, gentlemen. Appreciate it. 9.2, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County for reimbursement to the City of Reno in the amount of $21,465 for the Sparks share of a local limits study for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Michael Drinkwater, treatment plant manager. You have before you a request to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the City of Reno. As you are aware, we, the City of Sparks and Reno both run an environmental control program that monitors industrial and commercial dischargers to our facilities to make sure that they're in compliance with our discharge limits. Both of those programs were audited by U.S. EPA earlier this year and found to be in excellent condition with one or two small things. One of those was, we have not reviewed our local limits in some time. So rather than do this independently, Reno and Sparks, as well as Washoe County, got together, want to hire a single consultant. Reno will manage the project. Of course, we will be deeply involved. And then we will reimburse them a pro-rata share on behalf of the City of Sparks. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Questions for Mr. Drinkwater. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Do we get a chance to question federal limits during that time or just how we're complying with those limits?
No, sir. This is strictly what we allow, what you allow your commercial and industrial dischargers from the City of Sparks to put down the drains, that we have high confidence we can effectively treat before it goes back to the river. Those are the limits we're discussing.
Okay. Do we, do we ever have an opportunity to, to address what our federal limits mandate to us? How often do they have to go through and look at those?
We do. Every five years, our discharge permit is reviewed, and we have an opportunity at that time to, to provide comment. And that'll happen in two more years. And some are state, some are federal, but there's 22 different discharge limits we're held to. And at that time, we can...
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Looking for motion, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement as submitted by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, 9.3 is a first reading.
Bill number 2699. This is a first reading for ordinance by the City of Sparks amending Chapter 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code to remove the requirement for certification of qualification for any person who labors at the trade of plumbing or electrician in the City of Sparks and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
This is a first reading of Bill number 2699. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, December 14, 2015. 11.1, consideration of and possible action on a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from medium density residential, MDR, to transit oriented development, mixed residential, TODMR, for a site approximately 0.4 acres in a size located, in a size located at 1040 El Rancho Drive, PCN 15029. Ms. Melby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. I'm Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you today is actually a two-part application. The first one today is a master plan amendment. As you can see on the map, the air was pointing to the two parcels. This amendment is going from MDR, which is medium density residential, to transit oriented development, mixed residential. It's located at 1040 El Rancho. It's two parcels, but actually one address for both parcels. The north parcel is the parking lot. The south parcel is the office building. The neighborhood meeting for this project was held on July 29 of this year, and three people attended. The Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission found that the master plan amendment was in conformance with the regional plan on October 21, 2015. The master plan amendment supports the goals of the, by allowing the applicant broader permitted uses for the properties. The site is located in an area that's mixed residential types. It's adjacent to the City of Reno's park, which is just to the west of this property across El Rancho Drive. And the commercial use is to the north along Audi Boulevard. This request will provide new opportunities for the property owner to market their property. That concludes the presentation on the master plan amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby. Questions of the applicant. Public hearing, this public hearing item, anybody want to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for action. Questions? Julia, Ms. Ratty?
I move to certify the master plan amendment associated with PCN 15029 based on the findings, M1 through M4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Do we have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve agenda item 11.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 11.2, this companion item.
Yes. As part two, this application before you is a zone change request for these two parcels. They want to go from professional office to MUD or mixed use district, formerly our TOD zoning category. As you can see again, it's these two parcels located at 1040 El Rancho Drive. The zone change request complies with the master plan and is consistent with the surrounding land uses as I previously discussed in my master plan amendment presentation. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby. Questions for the applicant. Okay, this is a public hearing, Adam. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Ms. Ratty?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Bill number 2697 approving the rezoning associated with PCN 15029 based on the findings Z1 through Z3 with the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 11.2, Bill number 2697. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Pat. You're all set?
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, let's move on to 11.3, second reading, public hearing, consideration and possible action on Bill number 2698 to annex into the City of Sparks a site approximately five acres in size. Upon annexation, the parcel shall convert from a Washoe County zoning designation of A5 agricultural five acre minimum to minimum lot size to City of Sparks A5 agricultural five acre minimum lot size located at 6500 Spanish Springs Drive, Sparks, Nevada. Applicant is Red Hawk Land Company, PCN 1015036. Annexation, wow, we haven't done these in a while. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Martini, members of council, Ian Kretin, senior planner. This is an annexation request, as mentioned, from Red Hawk Land Development Company, to annex five acres, five acre site comprising of two, two and a half acre parcels just east and adjacent to Golden Eagle Regional Park. This is a voluntary, 100% voluntary annexation request, and the subject parcel is contiguous to the existing city limits. So the current land use designation for this parcel is, is general commercial. It was part of a project that was started and got the master plan changed previously, but then never finished any of the other parts of the entitlement process, never went through a, a plan development handbook or anything like that. And so the current owners are trying to bring this into the, the city as well as part of an effort to develop their site that includes the 60 acres to the north. Let's see. The, so the current use of this property is an unoccupied, single-family residence with some accessory buildings, agricultural accessory buildings. The site is in the NSSOY, the North Sparks Sphere of Influence. And as such, we've had planning jurisdiction over this parcel since 1991. In 2009 was when that land use change happened to transition it to general commercial. This area is in a county peninsula, which I don't know if that's a technical term, but it's not a county island. But it, it suffers from some of the same issues that a county island would.
Technical term.
Yeah. Namely jurisdictional confusion when, when called for, you know, emergency services. There's some confusion of who covers that area. I think that gets covered a little bit in some other ways. But this area is not in the seven-year annexation plan, but is, as part of the NSSOY. One of the goals, goal number 33 of the NSSOY is to annex every area in the NSSOY. So while it's not in the annexation plan, it is one of the goals of the, of the North Sparks Sphere of Influence. So this site is contiguous to existing city limits, and the City of Sparks would be the logical service provider, which is part of the review that we do. It is, oh, okay. So it's, it's within the TMSA, and sewer capacity and water capacity have been looked at for future development for this property already. This annexation will help us meet community goals, namely goal 33 from the NSSOY. And the annexation will not create a county island. It'll actually reduce portion of this county peninsula, as we're calling it. So the existing, as I mentioned, the existing land use designation for this property is general commercial. So any future developments going to have to go through a rezoning process and come into compliance with that, or it's also going to have to amend the master plan. and come into compliance with that, or it's also going to have to amend the master plan. And so this annexation is really just an effort to try to get this, the entirety of the property that the property owner would like to develop into the city limits, and then just pursue some of the other entitlement processes that they'll have to go through for future development. The properties within 1,800 feet of this site were noticed as part of the notice requirement, and this is the public hearing for that item, and that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for staff? Question for applicant? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it to public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Mike, you want to, anything you want to say or anything, or?
Good afternoon, for the record. Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Red Hawk Land Company. I think Ian did a great job with summarizing the staff report. We're just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing no more public comment, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Or questions? Any questions for staff or applicant looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to adopt Bill number 2698 and approve the annexation request associated with PCN 15036, to annex approximately five acres into the City of Sparks, Nevada, based on findings A1 through A4, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Agenda Item 11.3, Bill number 2698. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. What happened? Closed-door session, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public? Anyone else under comments from the public? Want to speak? No. Comments from the city council or city manager? Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement. Terms will expire for the following committees in December of 2015. The Sparks Planning Commission, two members, four-year terms. Persons interested in serving this committee should complete a community service application available to, from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then you would click on Fill Out the City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on December 15, or December 31st, excuse me, of 2015.
Okay, anyone else? Comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call the agency meeting of November 23, 2015, with a call, or with a roll call. Chairperson Rady?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a question. Thank you. Right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 4.1, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Agency Member Smith, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item 5.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October 26, 2015.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion from Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 6.1, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of October 8, 2015, through November 4, 2015.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion for approval by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 7.1, comments from the public? Anybody in the public have any comment? Seeing none. Item 7.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer.
One quick comment. Don't forget the turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning, 7:30. Be there, or B-square, right, Tracy? Great event. How many, how many years now?
This is our 17.
17 years. Don't miss it. It's a great deal.
It's gonna be a little cold this year, isn't it?
No, it's not cold. We don't allow it to be cold.
Any other comments?